Good evening, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Dear Lord, look lovingly on this group gathered here during this meeting as we discuss deliberate on issues of importance to this council. Help us to be guided by your spirit. May we be wise in discernment, balanced in your judgment, fair in our decisions, and visionary in our place. Though we may at times have differing views, may we listen to one another and be guided by our common goals. May we always be mindful in our words and actions of what is best for our community and citizens. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the meeting. Glad to see you all here. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo.
Here.
Mr. Parsons.
Here.
Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Here.
Okay, everyone is accounted for. That's always wonderful. You have before you the minutes from the August 19th, 2025 council meeting. Does anybody have any corrections?
On streets, it says, not bridge, there's two words and actually one word.
Where's that at in there?
Under streets, on the second page.
Second, the last pair of sentences.
Got it.
Everybody get that?
Sure.
Then I would ask for a motion to adopt as corrected.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt as corrected. Ms. Rissel has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Correspondence? Does anybody have any correspondence to bring before council? I have none. Guests and special events? Okay, public input. We have a few people that have signed up here to come speak to council. Who wants to be first? You need to come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. I don't want to make you more nervous, but you're on TV.
Oh, I know. Totally know. Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Kim Heath. I live on Maple Avenue, South Maple Avenue. I'm here with neighbors to request action on a longstanding public safety and quality of life problem caused by the open pedestrian cut-through from Lake of the Woods into our narrow dead-end block. For 30 years, we've dealt with people using the service drive and side path as a quick exit after criminal activity, frequent littering by cut-through foot traffic, and chronic overflow parking from Lake of the Woods. Residents who move vehicles to Maple to avoid the complex's rules. Maple is a narrow dead-end street. Congestion routinely blocks residents' deliveries and emergency access. History shows the service drive was never suitable as a through route. When cross-county construction briefly opened it years ago, two-way traffic and speeding made the street unsafe. It was quickly reclosed. Fire officials have also said a fire truck can't use the drive. That squares with modern standards. Fire apparatus access roads generally require an unobstructed 20-foot width and 13-and-a-half foot clearance. This drive doesn't meet that. Past arguments for keeping the pedestrian access open no longer apply. Malhealthy city schools has adjusted busing. Families within two miles are not currently provided service, so there's no need for students to cross into Maple to meet a bus here. So tonight, we're asking council to direct staff to: One, close the pedestrian cut-through with a proper fence and barrier where people walk through and around that chain that is directly across the service drive. Verify ownership. This is number two. Verify ownership right of way and start formal process to vacate or close the segment under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 7, 2, 3. Or coordinate with the owner if private. Three, manage on-street congestion on South Maple. Add time-limited parking or other restrictions allowed under the city's parking code. Four, enforce landlord reporting. Ensure Lake of the Woods complies with malhealthy tax rules that require rental owners to register and report tenant occupancy vacancy. So don't take this as a demand, but these are fluid timelines. These are the timelines that are requested. A written response in 14 days that can come to me, an onsite meeting within 30 days, and an engineering traffic recommendation back to council within 45 to 60 days for a vote. We've offered adjoining yard space for fence alignment for decades. We're ready to help again. Please prioritize closure of this cut-through parking controls and tax compliance enforcement so South Maple can function as a safe residential dead-end. Thank you so much, and I really hope you guys are taking this to heart because we are. I'm going to leave. This is just a help-you-out kind of to-do list for staff, and don't think I'm bossing you around. Please don't think that. This is just a helpful document that will, you know, let you see what I've said and what the recommendations are in terms of timing. Now, all of you, this would be council, mayor, police chief, and I don't think staff per se, have received an email from me. If you haven't opened it, anybody received that email?
I opened it. I saw it.
You saw it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll go back and recheck names and resend if necessary, but that was sent like second week maybe of August, I think. Who can I give this to? Okay. So that's what I have got to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, just, I have just a brief statement. Glad you're here, and it's a problem. It's been a problem for a long time. The older ones on this council, like myself, went through the same thing 25, 30 years ago. So it's nothing new. It's just new people that you have to get correct behavior out of. So anyway, we'll work on that. Administration, Mr. Bauer, do you have anything to say?
The email was sent on August 20th, and I can resend it if that's helpful to anybody, but it should be in everybody's email on roughly that date.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Ms. Heath provided videos and stuff attached to it as well, so.
First of all, you are one of our bosses. We have 7,000 bosses here in the city. But you had a video there with some kids in the alley?
Yes.
Were they coming through that same, the same passageway?
So, a couple things happened during the time that that video was taken. There was a property that is at the very end of the alleyway behind.
On Maple?
And there's a home that was purchased. So some of that activity could have been the new people at the end of the street, but there are so many other videos that I have of people, random people, just walking through. Like, I don't see them come in, so it tells me they're jumping the, maybe, retainment wall and coming through the alley that way. It's just a lot going on right now.
But there is only one actual passageway right at the end of Maple?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mr. Redding. Question. Have you been, have the residents on Maple been calling the police about activity?
Any activity that, where cars are being, trying to be garaged, that kind of thing. Also, any activity where maybe it's just disturbance, we'll call. And yes, there have been calls. And there's an altercation, and I think John might mention that when he speaks. I wasn't privy to that conversation, but John may talk about that a little bit. There's a lot going on.
Okay, so I'll request from the PD, and they should have it, just the calls from the last year, two years.
Yes, you can talk specifically to chief because he and I have met several times about it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's full aware. They've towed cars. I mean, again, the parking scenario is not just garaged cars or beat-up cars that have to be, have to come off of their property, like it was. It's also the number of cars. This is the first time in 30 years I've ever seen like eight to nine cars at one time. That's huge for that little street. And it just, it's a lot. And then people walking through and like, who are these people? When you live on a dead-end street, you kind of have a little privilege of knowing everybody and everybody's cars. So it's a lot, and it's time. It's time. Anybody else?
So I do have the report from chief. I mean, he gave it to me for the past maybe 10 years. So, I mean, you can definitely see a number of calls for, you know, look like either abandoned vehicles or just suspicious vehicles, something like that.
Altercations as well. There've been some altercations recently and then in the past as well. It's, yeah, it's a lot.
So, I mean, the cases exist, and I couldn't say, you know, how they compare to other streets. I mean, I wouldn't have a hard time believing that you definitely have an issue with cars. I was driving by that this morning, and literally the whole street's packed. I mean, there's not an open spot there. And there's a number of houses that have driveways, so it's not like people couldn't park in a driveway if they wanted, so it would make me think that some of it's from the apartment complex, so, I mean, yeah, probably something to it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I agree.
For coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sure some of this is from Lake of the Woods policy because we have that issue with the head of St. Clair from time to time.
St. Clair.
Yes.
All the time.
Today's my birthday, so I'm cutting out.
Okay, well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thanks for coming.
We're not going to sing.
You don't want us to.
You don't want us to.
Okay, who's next? John Christopher? Welcome, sir.
Thank you for your time. She pretty much covered everything.
Give us your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. John Christopher, 7318 Maple Avenue. Yeah, she pretty much covered everything. If they have a ding or a dent in their car, they're not allowed to park down there. They literally tow their cars, so they, that's why they are parking up there.
Right.
So, you know, and then a couple months back, there was a kid down there shooting a gun off, shot up 20 shots, went running down Maple. Luckily, they caught him, and then, you know, there's been stuff like that. The other thing is, we have, there's four or five of us that are, you know, we have a plumber, a locksmith, they all have work trucks. There's, like I said, five of us. Sometimes we can't park in front of our house, and, you know, we've had probably in the last year, three or four times, people coming down, checking doors. So we like to park our work trucks in front of the house, and sometimes it's not, you know.
Not possible.
Matter of fact, today, guy across the street, he parks his work truck in front of his house. Last couple of days, this kid, you know, has been parking there. He nicely, and I heard him, he said, "Would you please not park right in front of my house, you know, park down the street?" And right off the bat, "What are you going to do about it?" You know, it wasn't, and like I said, the man was nice, respectful, but we just, we like parking our stuff in front of our house.
I understand.
And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Christopher?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura Pierce? She's not here yet?
She's not here yet.
Okay. Who else want to talk to council? Nobody else? How about a Valetta?
I am giving background.
Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll have to get on this. It's the same thing we went through 25, 30 years ago. Nothing new about this. Thank you all for coming up.
Have a nice birthday.
And stay in touch with us. Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. Ms. Moody? I don't recall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Called for the mayor's report.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, no reason to.
I do, I do want to, I know what they're going through. I don't live on a small street. I live on St. Clair. But that is what happens. We have work trucks, vans on St. Clair that come from Lake of the Woods because, for whatever reason, they're not allowed to park there. And so, I mean, they have a small street. I mean, my street's bigger, but it's a cut-through, but it's an issue. I tend to think maybe it needs to go to Streets and Safety Committee, and we need to investigate it more, but I, I mean, I understand what they're saying. The problem is, you've got to, you know, what I've dealt with on St. Clair is a public street. So I can't ask somebody, "Please don't park in front of my house." Of course, they can't park on my side anyway. And then, you know, with the nurse, with the funeral home, you know, there's a lot of traffic too. So it's a delicate issue, but I do sympathize with the overflow of cars from Lake of the Woods. Okay, now getting to my report. We have, we will have a vacancy on BZA. I believe last time I expressed an interest in appointing Jessica Ramsey. Scott and I met with her at 5:30. She works for Kenton County. She's the IT person there that kind of manages their IT department. We met with her. She has a lot of good government background. She's very interested in being on the BZA, so I would like to ask council if they would approve Jessica Ramsey. She lives here in town on Madison Avenue to be on the BZA starting in September 2025. That will go for three years to 2028. So at some point, under new business, if you would please approve Jessica Ramsey. I just, I know that I don't want to steal anybody's thunder for the next meeting, but a lot of park activity. Want to thank all of the people on council. Everybody was there to either participate or help with everything that went on this weekend. And I also want to thank Public Works for their role in making a lot of this happen. We even had more people in the community help out for the Shakespeare in the Park, and it was just a really nice weekend, and I just want to thank everybody on council that was either there in attendance or helped with setting up or cleaning up. It was really very good. I'm going to let Scott handle most of everything else, but I do want to say that it's pretty exciting to see the facade improvements going on up in town. And Scott and I and Paul met with two awning companies because we feel we'll have money for these businesses that have applied. They wanted awnings that maybe we can put some awnings up to. I think you're going to see a real dramatic look as to what's going on up in our core business district. Also, I've been attempting, I started this, and it's, I, we've got little note cards, and again, I've told anybody on council that ever wants to use these. I'm attempting to, at least in the core business district, write appreciation notes that they have a business here in town, that we appreciate their business, that we are, they're restoring, and we're looking at renovations in the core business district. They, please, if they have any input. I did visit Animal House today. You know, we kind of forget about that business. That is a very thriving pet store. They have a really good reputation, and I walked in there with a little note card today talking to the manager because now that we're going to be approved for more facade improvement money, especially not only welcoming the new businesses that we have here in town, but looking at the businesses that have been here for years, that we really owe that thanks to them keeping their businesses here and trying to work with them to improve any facade improvements they need, or being open up to any input when it starts with the streetscape plans we have and anything else that we're going to be doing, that they certainly, we value their input. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you. Questions for the mayor? Okay, moving on. City manager's report. Mr. Bauer.
Yeah, just got a few things here. I'll touch on the facade improvement. If you look at the Underground Railroad building, the northwest corner of Hamilton Compton, that one is actually completed. I did the final walkthrough on the Thursday or Friday, I forget when we were up there. So that one's done. Aquatics and exotics has been, they're probably going to start painting this week, I would imagine, but everything's been pressure washed, and they've chipped the paintaways. You can kind of see, it looks a little rough right now, but that's because they're about to start putting a fresh coat of paint on there, so maybe even by the end of this week, probably end of next week, that one will be completed. Brothertons, I honestly don't know how extensive the masonry work is, but the one layer that they're doing is almost done. I don't know, maybe they'll just do touch-up work with the rest, but that should hopefully be getting painted here pretty soon too as well. Let's see.
You know, I forgot something. Ethos, you got that email. Ethos Art Collective is having their art gallery this Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday and Saturday.
Yes. I was just going to mention the, yeah, the awnings. Mayor already mentioned that. Excited for that. Should be getting a quote. They made it sound like it'd be even this week. This week or next, we'll get a quote. I finally had two contractors visit Antique Mall to look at that wall. One guy seemed really excited about it. I feel like people kind of look at it and just, their eyes are crossed, they don't really know what to do. It's kind of an odd project for someone to handle, so it's, again, that's the shared wall between the Taekwondo Building and Antique Mall, so excited. Might have a couple contractors that are interested in doing it. Let's see, I did receive back, we have CDBG money. I got two quotes back, or I'm sorry, one quote back for the two ADA ramps that we want to have built in the park. So going to try and get a couple more, but hopefully I'll have those to present here in the next couple weeks or a couple meetings, we can get started on that. I drove most of the alleys today. I was trying to look and see. Doug, our code enforcer, he sent letters to pretty much everyone in town, anyone that had an alley, to try to cut back everything, and wasn't quite where I wanted it to be, but it's been overgrown for a long time, so I think it's going to take a lot of work to get it, to get it cut back, but still working on that. I think that's really all that I had. Still working on the Brumke contract. I've met with Waterworks, got a bunch of contract information. Not quite in a consumable point right now for me to present it, but kind of, I'll start putting all that stuff together for you guys, hopefully. Hopefully, the next meeting, I should have it together, so that is all that I have.
Mr. Redding.
One question. When you were discussing the alleys, was that only in the business area, or did he go through the residentials?
It was, it was everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, some, pretty clear they had cut it back, but there's just a bunch. I mean, it's, the one that was the worst, I think it was maybe Warner. That's all residential. I mean, it's just, it's a jungle going through it. I mean.
Ours was pretty bad, but they've cleaned it up a lot.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, again, some, some people have been great in cutting it back, but it's going to take, hoping this year we can hit it really hard, and, you know, maybe next year we can start looking into doing some more work on the alleys, but it was everybody.
Mr. Parsons, you said, did you say we're building two ramps in the park? One's down to the lower field, is the other one where the steps are here?
Yeah, I mean, the intention was to start with this one and just kind of see how far the money would get us.
But it's up here, from the street down, the first level?
Yep, from the cannon down to the, yeah.
Where the steps are right now, yeah.
Yeah, and the funding was, was there, do the.
Next to the veterans memorial.
Yes, correct. Correct. So the quote looked like we could do both with the amount of money we were given with CDBG, so.
Good.
Yeah. It was just kind of an initial look at it, but seemed like we could get it both, get them both done.
Hey, any other questions, counsel?
What's the timeline with the shared wall and the antique wall?
The two contractors, it took, I don't know if you extend this out, it took like three months just to get two contractors out there just last week to look at it, so those were the first people to even come out and look. Again, the one guy seemed, he had actually worked with the structural engineers that had already looked at it, so he's used to kind of these weird projects. I have high hopes for him. We'll see. So still have to even get a quote. I have no idea even what the cost would be if it's a couple grand or 100 grand. You know, I shouldn't say that number out loud. Yeah. It's only a portion of the building. It's not the whole length of it, but again, that, that was the first time anyone had come out was just, met with a guy today and then another guy just last week, so it took forever just to get a couple guys out, so hopefully get a quote in the next couple weeks and go from there.
Could that be considered facade improvement?
Well, so the grant we got to the port, there is contingency built into it, like beyond what I even submitted for.
For the demolition?
So I don't know if it's, I, you know, obviously, at this point, I have no clue what the quote's going to come back for, but it could be, so the construction of that wall could be included in the contingency of the grant, but I want to say it was like 10%. So the grant was about 100, so I don't know if 10 grand would cover.
Cover a lot, part of it anyway.
Yeah. I mean, the intention's just, I mean, we'd probably just put siding. Right now, if you look in the, on the top of it, it's siding, but I don't even know what you call it. It's like metal siding. Is that still called siding at that point? I don't know, but it would just, something to match, so we'd have the studs and then something like that over it. So we're not bricking it up or anything complicated. I mean, I think the long term, it'd be nice to have brick to make it match the rest of the facade, but that's kind of down the road, so hopefully it won't, hopefully it won't be too expensive, but we'll see.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Moving on then, the public works director, Justin Westridge.
I really don't have anything prepared, so we're just going to fly with it. So, what was it? Last time I saw you was June? So we had the two high school boys that did the watering and litter picking all summer. They're back at school. That seemed to work out pretty well. Did pretty much every day the water, the flowers are getting watered and the litter was getting picked. So we've had two property cleanups that we did. One was pretty extensive, and one was a lot less extensive, but still turned out, you know, a big difference. Couple tree cleanups from the, from the wind. Had to borrow some equipment to clean the trees up, but we got those cleaned up, blocking roads and, and alleys and whatnot. We should be done with our storm drain either later this week or beginning of next week. That's been a real doozy. The weather's finally cooperated and been pretty much over there almost every day for the past two weeks, so it'd be nice to wrap that up. And we were looking at repairing some roads around town, the big one being Clovernough. I feel like we should put forth a great effort to save it. I mean, it's getting pretty bad over there, so we're roughly right around 49, 50 tons worth of asphalt work over there, but it should be a lot easier with the equipment that we got at the beginning of the year, and then some additional equipment that was donated to us. So, yeah, hopefully we'll get started over there on Clovernough in the next couple weeks. That's probably it. Yeah.
Do you not want to talk about the, the new track layout? Are you afraid to advertise that?
Yeah, no, that, so, I mean, I guess people have probably been noticing that the RC tracks changed a little bit, but I assure you, we've been doing that on our own time. That's what I did all weekend. I feel like as taxpayers, you probably, while I'm on the clock, would rather see me fix roads and infrastructure than work on a RC track in the park, so all that's been happening on my own time. That's about it.
But you got a new, it's probably half as big now?
Oh, yeah. There's, I mean, so over the weekend, we did quite a bit of work. It's pretty close to 1,000 feet of racing lane, and we ran out of dirt, so that'd be the next step, is get some more dirt, and we got like maybe 134, 130 feet more to lay out, and then should be back open for business, so. But yeah, catching a lot of, a lot of unhappy folks on Facebook, so, but it is what it is. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Questions for Justin, counsel?
The, the tree removal on Harrison that you did? That was a little while ago.
Yeah, the empty lot.
Yeah, the cost of that, can we get that under the Tree City Grant? Can we get that covered or put that in as part of the grant?
The Tree City Grant, basically, the arborist specifically identified seven trees, so those were the seven that we did.
Okay, so we can't.
Yeah. So I mean, these would have been in addition.
These were.
I mean, they were still dropping limbs and the one was, I mean, it was big and it was, I mean, you could see straight to the middle.
The big acapulco was leaning towards the house.
Yeah.
It was to the, to the north.
Yeah.
There was a maple that was dropping large limbs. It was pretty rotten. And then I think it was a hackberry that was right next to the alley with a house directly south of it. So it was just, he's going to be there, knock all three of them down at the same time, get a, kind of a group price that way. Two houses are much safer now, kind of thing.
Okay. But we, no, I'm, I was just wondering if, if we could include the Harrison tree work that you did, but.
I mean, we usually have a few grand worth of tree work worked into the budget.
I feel like this year's been pretty, a lot more than a few thousand dollars for the tree work done.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this is, I mean, this, some of these trees are specialty items, so we can't, we can't get to it. I mean, the bucket truck that we share with North College Hill is, we'll just call it out of commission, no longer. We refuse to use it due to the safety. North College Hill actually refuses to use it, so we don't have a bucket truck anymore. So, and the one that we did have only went up 25 feet. I mean, the one that T.H.E.'s using, I mean, that goes up 60. I mean, that's, that's a huge difference, so you can reach a lot further.
Yeah.
So, but, and then there's, you know, have to constantly borrow, you know, chippers and stuff like that to, you know, get everything cut up, so sometimes it's just easier to, to sub it out.
Yep.
Yep.
Being up in the air with Shane Salz, almost requires a professional.
It's not my favorite thing to do, I'll tell you that. Even at just 25 feet, it's really not my favorite thing to do, but yeah.
Any other questions?
I got a question. About four months ago, you came to the Street Committee talking about some special equipment to fix large areas. Did you get all that equipment now?
Two weeks ago, it all came.
Today?
Yeah, it's, it's all here. Every last bit of it.
Okay.
We got the tailgate, we got to weld some hinge pieces on and paint it. That's, do that ourselves, that saves us 2,500 bucks. And, yeah, everything else is here, the paver, all that stuff.
Ready to go.
Yep, ready, almost ready to go.
Almost ready to go, okay.
We're much, much closer to being ready to go.
The sooner the better, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Ordinances and resolutions. We have no ordinances. We do have some new resolutions. The first reading of a resolution number 25-1234. An emergency resolution providing authority to the law solicitor to execute the subdivision and special district participation forms for the secondary manufacturers, secondary manufacturer settlement agreement. Okay, I read the words, now tell me what it says.
This is just another opioid settlement, and I think it's another one that we don't know how much it is for yet. I'm pretty sure we don't know the same, the amount yet. It'll go into the one opioid fund that we have set up. You know, I think the intention's to use it for, I think, Narcan purchases. I don't know if there's, still kind of research, trying to research exactly what other purchases maybe we can use, but it's supposed to be meant for opioid issues that could arise through our EMS, stuff like that, so. But this would just be approving that, approving the settlement, and then eventually we'd, they would let us know how much it's for.
So this is listed as an emergency resolution. Do you want that passed tonight, or are you talking about suspending the, the?
Let's see, now.
30-day note, you know?
Let's see, Scott's.
It's not due till October 8th, but.
Yeah, I forget what. Under section 3. Let's see, at its next council meeting, yeah. Law director did not say it needed to be passed in one, in one reading, so he just said present it. At next, so if you're, if you're fine doing it in one reading.
Two readings.
Or two.
Two readings, is it okay?
Yeah.
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 Any other discussion, council? So you want to do a first reading?
Yes.
Okay. First reading on resolution number 25-1234. And the second resolution is number 25-1235. A resolution authorizing city manager of the city of Mount Healthy to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Works, Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required.
This is one we do every year. We pass this, then I'll submit it to JMA, and they include it with our application to OBWC. So this would go along with our Hickman Project and the Hunt Ridge Van Fleet. So we recommend one reading, as long as you're happy with it. The 30% is listed in there, we would do 30% for Hickman. I guess not specifically, it's been laid out this, this way, I think, for the, I don't know how many years, so we can add to it if we need to, but it'd be 30% for Hickman. And even though it doesn't say, we would do 20% for Hunt Ridge Van Fleet.
I think that needs to be spelled out. I think first priority, Hickman, Compton to the South Terminus at a 30% match. And the second priority was Hunt Ridge, Hunt Ridge and Van Fleet with a 20% match.
All right, so it's, so right now, it just says, make capital improvements to various streets and infrastructure need of repair for Sarah's benefit. What, what, what do you want it to say?
Just specify the first priority.
The capital improvements of various streets.
Is Hickman from Compton to the South Terminus with a 30% match. Second priority is Hunt Ridge and Van Fleet with a 20% match.
You have all.
This isn't due, you don't have to do this till later in September, right? By the 1st of October, apply for it.
I, I honestly forget when the actual application is due, but I mean, they have us, obviously pass this beforehand. It is, it is a 16th.
Don't know when that's due?
Oh, they did not tell me.
Can we just amend the second whereas to read second priority, Hunt Ridge and Van Fleet at 20%?
Yeah, I think that's already all you'd have to do, is the second whereas.
That be suffice?
We don't even have Hickman in there yet.
Yeah, we'll put Hickman in there.
That's all, that's all we need to do, is amend that, but if we don't have to pass it tonight, I'd rather wait till the next time, see the, see the language.
Taken directly from the past. I don't know. We may not even have the percentage.
Counsel?
Do you feel good about it, Sarah? Do you have your, the correct?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, I would recommend the one reading, because I honestly don't recall when they said it, when they would submit it. I don't have it in my emails, the dates. I would recommend, as long as you guys are happy with it, to just do it in one reading.
Let's hear.
We don't want to miss the deadline, that's for sure.
Hear what it.
I feel like they would have yelled at me today to pass it if it was, if, if you couldn't also do it on the 16th, but just to make sure, I would recommend one reading. So we might have the cushion in there, but just to be safe.
Okay. Hang on one minute.
Does anybody follow this conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Understand it? Then what is council's wishes? Do you want to pass it tonight? Ask for a suspension of the two reading rule?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, let's be, yeah, let's be better safe than sorry, I think, right?
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion to suspend the two reading rule on resolution number 25-1235 as amended.
As a what?
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt as amended?
No, suspend the two reading.
Suspend the two reading rule, I'm sorry. And Mr. Redding has seconded that motion. All those, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 25-1235 as amended, and I'll, I'll just read the amendment, make sure we're all clear again. Priority one, Hickman Avenue at 30% from Compton Road, south to the Terminus. And second priority would be a 20% match for Hunt Ridge and Van Fleet.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt, is that correct?
I'll second that.
Mr. Young? Second to that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the voice. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, resolution number 25-1235 is adopted. That is all of our legislation for this evening. Move on then to old business, council. Does anybody have any old business to bring up? New business?
Couple of things. So we've been out walking, temperature's gotten cooler, property maintenance issues that, that I've seen while walking are just, they're, they're, honestly, they're overwhelming. I don't know a better word for it, they're overwhelming. So I would ask that during the 20, for the 2026 budget preparation, that we look at adding more money to the budget for property maintenance. Searching for the word and I missed, missing it, just for property maintenance admission. So make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do as far as code goes. And maybe even to look at our, our current code.
Sure.
To see if we can add to it. But to echo Jenny, I really liked that appreciation note idea, so I'm going to throw out two places that, while we were walking the other night, really impressed me, and that's the chiropractic office on Hamilton Avenue. I'm not going to put a name with it.
Right.
But it is the chiropractic office on Hamilton Avenue. They do a great job. It always looks nice. And there's a house on Joseph Street, the north end of Joseph Street. Every time we walk by it, it's spotless, it's just really nice looking, very, very appealing. So again, I don't want to list any names, but definitely appreciate the hard work that those people put into their house and the people that put into the business, the chiropractic business.
And, you know, I'm doing the businesses, but these are available to anybody. And when you're out walking, if you want to personally write that and leave that on the doorstep as a councilperson?
Yes, I will, I will def.
I'll give you some of these, okay?
I'll get a pad, yes.
Yeah, because it, it's nice to just be able to say, hey, I've been walking by your house, I'm on city council, I just really appreciate the way you maintain. I mean, you know, people, businesses and also people that live in our community need to know that, you know, we do appreciate people that are really doing a good job keeping their maintenance up, yeah.
Thank you. And then finally, we want to take care of the BZA, right, Jenny?
Yep.
Get that, um. And Jessica Ramsey?
Yes.
Do, is that a voice vote, or do we have to?
It's a I vote.
I vote, okay.
For a three-year term.
So I guess I gotta.
Make a motion.